All right, well, good evening. It's after seven o'clock, and welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of Worcester City Council being held this Monday, November 4th. Tonight's meeting is in here in chambers and also livestreamed on YouTube. And our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Monday, November 18th, 2024. Ms. Hamilton, will you please call the rule of our attendees, please?
Mr. Abernathy.
Here.
Mr. Gaffey.
Here.
Mr. Husey.
Here.
Ms. Knappick.
Here.
Mr. Malta.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented. This time, I'll ask you to stand and join the members of City Council in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I can have a approval of the minutes from our meeting from last two weeks ago?
Motion.
Motion from Mr. Abernathy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaffey. All those in, all those favor approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Communications from the mayor. Mr. Mayor, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. First, I'm going to start off with some updates that I think we promised at the last meeting. I'll start off with the issues surrounding some juveniles at Knightsfield Park. I think Chief Fisher or other members of the police department have reached out to most council members during the course of the week, and you have a written summary in front of you that's, you know, it looks like it's a little patched together because it kept getting updates. I think there's like three addendums to it as things would develop during the course of the week. I know that Scott Rotolo is here, and he's available to answer any questions you might have. And but for the public's benefit, as much as anything, I'm going to just hit some of the highlights. There were four juvenile identified as being kind of central to the problems that were happening there. All four of those received no trespass letters. Two of those happened to be served with those while they were at school, so hopefully that made an impression upon them and maybe others. One of the things, if you don't know this before now, you're going to see now, is that the criminal justice system is not really set up well to deal with juveniles, particularly where there's not a lot of parental support. And that's, you know, nothing unique to Worcester or Wayne County, and that's just the way it is. But I would say that one of those four juveniles then was later involved in a separate incident, not involving the park or that neighborhood, was arrested and transferred to Stark County Attention Center. So again, it wasn't a little bit, you know, you've got an indication of a juvenile who a little bit is going off the rails, which is unfortunate at a bunch of levels, but again, the neighbor shouldn't have put up with that. We're not asking him to. There was a fifth individual involved who recently turned 18, and that changes everything. So he has been charged as an adult, and the case was sent to the prosecutor's office for review and possibly charges, criminal charges will be filed against the 18-year-old. I think most, if not all, of the things that have happened in the last two weeks might have taken place regardless of council's request for report and are stepping in there, but I'm still glad that it was. I see Mr. Fetzer is here tonight, I believe, and I'm glad, you know, glad he and the others came forward and made sure this was there. And again, I don't fault council at all for asking the administration to do something about this, and I want to commend Worcester PD for stepping forward and taking care of that, because the neighbors' concerns were surely justifiable. So again, we think, and I think there's also been an increased presence in the area, and hopefully that's had a dampening effect. And frankly, when the weather turns, assuming we are going to have winter or at least fall at some point, that should have a good effect on that as well. But we'll keep an eye on that and keep you posted on any developments. Appropriations. We also had an appropriations measure before your last week involving the bike path and the rights way that were required for that. If you recall, John was not here tonight, but last time, he reported there were 46 total parcels involved and that we had successfully negotiated easements with 34 of those property owners. That left 12 outstanding that need to be addressed. Since then, and partially, probably as a result of council authorizing us to move forward, 11 of those 12 have come to terms with the city. So we're only left with one property owner outstanding. It's the, if you recall this, it's the commercial property owner where the local people said, "Our corporate office isn't going to pay any attention to this until you file suit." So we are going to have to go through the steps of filing suit, but we're pretty confident that as soon as that suit gets filed, the corporate, it's a big company, corporate office is going to pay attention to it, we'll get the terms negotiated out, and that one will be done. So that's a little bit of a unique situation. Appropriations and eminent domain suits are not new to us, though, when I say us, the city. It's pretty common type of thing that we see and we've used in the past, and really all municipalities in Ohio do so. We just did a quick little survey of in the last 20, 25 years, and we've used them at times. And again, typically, it's isolated property owners, but construction of water towers, bike paths, and most often, they're used in connection with road widens and improvements. So any of the main arterial roads you see that have widened over the years, and I'll throw out Merrose Drive, Bellav, Portage Road, Friendsville Road, Akron Road 585, on all of those, the same drill's been followed. You know, we identify the parcels involved, reach out to all the landowners, negotiate as many as we can, get authorization to take, you know, commence litigation if necessary with the others. That brings most of the others around, and on occasion, suit is required to be filed. But typically, in those cases, once suit is filed, resolution comes pretty quickly because, you know, there's an appraisal involved in the process early on, setting the value of what the property owner is losing. And the landowners do have a right to contest that figure and have a trial on that, but more often than not, their appraisal is going to say the same thing as the appraisal, independent appraiser we've hired. It's not our number, it's the independent appraiser's figure. So that's kind of the way that plays out. Third update is on the proposed roundabout on Burbank and Oldman and Winkler. And we had told you, we've been really hesitant to go too far forward, because at this point, we had not spoken to Wayne County Commissioners on this project. And again, everything's in the talking stage at this point, but likely as not, they're going to be the biggest player as far as land involved in that if it goes forward. And we wanted to talk to them before we sent anything to the public or to council really as a whole in print. And that all happened last Friday. Well, the reason it happened last Friday is we met with the Commissioners Friday afternoon. Ron Umstutz was not able to attend, but John Hofstadter and Dave McMillan were. It was informational only. We weren't asking for any commitments from them at all. We just wanted to share them information that we had, what we were proposing in general terms, and we were not looking for any commitments, and they didn't make any. But with that being said, I think it was Joel, John Rice, and I, we came out meeting feeling very good about it. They came in with the attitude of, "Well, this is a problem for the community. What can we do to help it go away?" Which the public may take for granted, is that's the way politicians, you know, government officials should always act? It's not that way. Typically, when you get the county-city thing, there are some communities, not in Wayne County maybe, but in other areas of the state, where you can't get county and city officials in the same room, let alone agree to take a corroborative approach to working on a problem. And that's exactly what Dave and John demonstrated, is their willingness to do what they could, again, with no commitments whatsoever, but, you know, they seemed determined to do what they could to help us get this accomplished. So that's just where we're at with them. On their part, obviously, Ron was not there, Ron Umstutz, they're going to have to talk to him. They've got to talk to the county engineer, people on their side. They've got to do their due diligence to understand what issues they've got with that site, because they're using that site now, maybe just for parking, but they have the communications tower there, the facilities, and they use those as athletic fields. And the parking is tight now for the athletic fields, even without the loss of any spaces. And no matter what we do, we're either going to take some or a lot of those spaces, so that's a consideration. On the subject of roundabouts, I would note, we also met with ODOT District 3 reps. They're very familiar with that intersection, and they gave thumbs up to a roundabout there. They thought that was an ideal solution for the problem, so it wasn't anything formal, but we're going to have their backing going forward. Finally, I did want to reach out. There were concerns expressed at the last meeting about pedestrian safety and safety of students on school buses. It just, I had to call Gabe Tudor after that and find out, because the roundabout at the west end of Oldman has been open for a year now, a year plus. So we ought to have some firsthand experience on what's happened there. So I asked Gabe how that, what his experience has been with that roundabout, and he did say, "There was some initial pushback on it from all the driving public, including bus drivers, but that is for the most part gone away, and in terms of actual incidents involving either pedestrians or school buses, he was not aware of any." And I specifically asked him about risk of students being thrown out of their seats by going through the roundabout, and he said, "That had not occurred locally," or he'd never heard of it happening anywhere else. So I don't know if we can put that to bed, but we're not aware of any local issues with that. And I had to laugh. Yesterday, I went, happened to go up and wanted, I wanted to check out the Oak Hill Extension in Milltown to see how that was coming along, and I'm not sure what a Worcester school bus was doing out on a Sunday afternoon, but I assume maybe it was a sports team headed off to a tournament somewhere if they play on Sundays, but I followed one through the roundabout, and I had to think that was ironic. So those are my updates. As far as what we've been up to, had my breakfast with Dr. McCall from the college. We try to do that on a quarterly basis. PPM staff invited us out for a hot dog cookout a couple of weeks ago to kick off the leaf pickup season. I guess this is an annual event that they've been hosting. They kind of, I think it's opportunity, they do a little bit of training that day. Mr. Denning is the host, and although you've got to cook your own hot dog, I found out. But it's opportunity for them to kind of reflect on the projects. Obviously, you know, they're winding down from the summer, where they've got a lot of projects going on, and now they're taking on the city of Worcester's leaf population, so that's kind of a transition for them. So it was a nice opportunity to mix with them. We had a WCC meeting, and nothing of note happened at that. I did have the opportunity, and I'll share this information with you when it's posted, but I did a podcast with Butch Rogers and Luke Martin. I don't know if you're familiar with them, but they do a series. So if you wanted to know more about Bob Reynolds, you're going to have your opportunity. Listen at your own risk, it'll be posted soon. In all seriousness, though, they do a really nice job, so even though, you know, you may think, if you watch any of their work, they produce a nice product, and we've talked about it internally, about ways we can maybe use that type of medium to better communicate to the citizens. So it's something we're going to explore with them. In fact, we're trying to set up a meeting with Luke here to talk about that further. Just because there's issues out there that you want to talk about in depth that don't, I would think you would all agree that I talk long enough at these meetings, you don't want me going any further, but there are times that there are subjects that deserve more discussion, and it might give us an opportunity to do that in a forum that, for those that are interested, they can go to it, and without making everybody that's not interested sit through the whole thing. We've had two more Citizens Academy meetings. We did one with the Safety Center, and then the last one was here, planning and zoning. Safety Center was obviously fire and police. Planning and zoning was Vince Marion in charge. Worcester Community Hospital Board meeting, construction is moving a pace on the PA, the Pace Project, that's moving along, and if you've watched it all, the Wayne County Jail addition is going up. If you, I don't know if you paid attention, but that's kind of fascinating, the way they're doing that. They're pouring the panels on the ground and lifting them into place. Mr. Sanders can give you the full details. I probably, I don't know if I misdescribed that at all, but it is kind of wild, because I drive that by that several times a day, and, you know, the building looks different in the afternoon than it does in the morning. It's gone up that quickly. We had our monthly managers meeting last week. On the 24th, there was a junior achievement event held down at the event center at the fairgrounds. We had over 600 students. These are for local high school seniors. We had over 600 students in attendance. Many of our local employers had booths set up, and I was invited. It's my first time there, so I didn't really know what to expect, and I found out that I get down there, and Worcester PD and Worcester Fire Department each had their own booth set up, so I had a chance to go down and visit with them, and seemed to be a very popular attraction. Apparently, the rules are that you're not allowed to actively recruit there, but I do think people write down a lot of phone numbers and things like that, so again, you're trying to get seniors, you know, trying to, you know, steer towards a career path that might lead into one of those trades or professions. It was a well-organized event, very well-attended. When WDC put on their economic forum last Thursday, I know many of you were in attendance. Same afternoon, Worcester Community Hospital held an open house for their wound in Hyperbaric Center. That's in the old Western Reserve Building, a very nice-looking facility. You know, if you recall, they moved out of the former mattress store, so they are very happy with the new surroundings. Then Saturday was the United Way's Hart and Ghoul Walk, which was very well-attended, weather was perfect. And then on the 30th, we had a meeting with Elizabeth Van Mityr, who is the new Channel Five person that will be covering our area. I think she'll probably be in touch with you. She seems very interested in doing more about Worcester, and we tried to hook her up, or we did hook her up with Shannon Weller with Main Street, with the hopes that she'll be doing something on the Winter Wonderland event, which is not very far away at all. Finally, we had a Main Street meeting last week, and I think you heard a month or two ago, we were having some complaints from downtown residents and merchants about some issues with some of the people that are hanging around the square, and it seems, again, who knows if it's the weather or increased police presence, which I know that Worcester PD has tried to do downtown following those complaints, but those complaints have not maybe gone away entirely, but they're greatly reduced, so kind of making progress there. Turning to the agenda, very quickly on this, we have three items on second reading and six items on first. From the administration standpoint, I try not to call wolf on this, and I cry wolf, and tell you we've got some urgency on some when we don't have any. We don't have any on any of these, so take all the time you want on deliberating on these. We will be bringing to council at our next meeting legislation that is proposed to extend the marijuana moratorium for additional two years. That's coming upon the recommendation of the Laws and Ordnance Committee following their committee meeting. Last two things, I wanted to note that Mark Glasgow is retiring from NCTV. I'm old enough to remember back to the first local cable TV service we had in Worcester, and like most things, the changes that have taken place in 50 years are staggering. I want to thank Mark for his role in that growth and for his years of service, and wish him the best on his well-earned retirement. Then finally, Fire Station Number One Open House. I think many of you were there. It was well-attended. Chief Saley, hats off to him, he did a very nice job putting you to that presentation. Really, to repeat comments that I made then, I want to thank everybody that had a hand in that, and that goes all the way down to the taxpayers that made it possible ultimately, but prior administration, prior council, Fire Department, not just Chief Saley, but all the firefighters that had to be displaced for a while while the construction was going on, the people that worked to get the new one up and running. It's a community that's going to serve, it's a facility that's going to serve our community for a long time, and it's something we can be proud of. I've had, I'm guessing you have all heard the same thing, from the outside, it's gorgeous. It looks like a fire station, which is, as Jola said, it's the first fire station we've ever had that looks like a fire station. So it's something we can be very proud of, and I think, to me, the best thing is it provides a home for our firefighters, it's worthy of their dedication to our community. So with that, again, my apologies. Mr. President, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Next item will be petitions, which we have none. We had communications from the public, but that will be limited to the miscellaneous section later in our meeting. However, we do have a couple of public hearings, which at this point, the first one this evening, Ms. Knappick will be chairing.
Yes, this is a public hearing on ordinance 2024-28. I want to give big props to Vince Marion, who did a great job with all of these zoning changes. I had an opportunity to read through it very closely, word for word, and he just, he did an excellent job of putting this together. The only thing I can, I would like to talk to from a committee standpoint tonight is on, I believe it's page 11, Section 15 Tobacco and Electronic Cigarette Stores. This is, has to do with the vape stores and the cigarette stores that we don't have zoning for, and the city put together very good zoning arrangement and zoning provisions for them. My only concern is that it does mention marijuana dispensaries and medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana or marijuana retail stores, that type of thing, and I will be working on language. Actually, what I would do is I would take out the first sentences, it starts with "a" spacing, da-da-da, I would end it at the third line, cigarette store, take out everything regarding medical marijuana dispensary, and take out the next line completely. And my reasoning for that is, first of all, it's unnecessary. We don't have dispensaries in town. It looks like we may not have dispensaries ever in town. I think this is mixing apples and oranges, different topics, different subject matters. It's confusing, I believe. I would prefer not to have to go to various code sections to find out, you know, where can you put this and where can you put that? So I would prefer, if and when the city ever does get dispensaries for marijuana, then the coding for that be done at that time, this coding and the zoning be done at that time, rather than even being referenced in this. And finally, I think it makes the piece of legislation much cleaner, more open, more transparent, keeps subject matter to subject matter and other subject matter to other subject matter. Doesn't look like we're trying to do anything at all with medical marijuana, which at this point, we are not trying to do any zoning with that. So I will be moving to, I have a couple of options. I can either move to amend this section as I previously stated, and then that's my really only objection to that, and depending upon how the comments from other people on council and comments from the public, we can go forward, or we can just leave it on second reading and change the language and set it up to be passed for the next meeting. Are there any other comments from either committee members or members of City Council?
No objection.
I agree with you with your assessment.
Thank you.
Thanks for finding it.
Would you prefer that we, I think I'd prefer that we do it next meeting. That way, it's just cleaner. I have this thing with, I like to see one thing at a time. So, okay, that's great. Are there any comments from the public on this particular issue, on any of the code, zoning code changes? We addressed many issues, not just the vape shops, but we also addressed, let's see, make sure I'm in the right piece of legislation here, wind turbine systems, and it's kind of interesting to think that we need coding for that. I don't know if we have any right now, but it's good to have it when we need it, and so that was, that was good. And fences, to make fences consistent, it's another zoning code change that I think is just making, making things consistent and looking, looking good, and then some environmental protection issues with the wind turbine, but other, and signs. The other thing that's in this piece of legislation is when signs are not compliant for businesses in Worcester, when that business is discontinued, that sign will then be taken down, and the next business will have to put up a sign that's in compliance with our current rules and regulations, which I think is a good idea. And I think that's, and license massage, having a license issued by the State Medical Board of Ohio for medical or for massage therapy and/or acupuncture. We added that to the zoning code, too. So we covered a lot of bases, but I think that, again, as I said, I think the city managed to get a lot of things done in this piece of legislation. And without any other comment from the council or the public, I will end this public hearing.
I have a question, though, sorry.
Yes, I want to end this public hearing.
I was trying to finish this mint, so it wasn't, sorry. Okay, so there were a couple of things that might not necessarily be super important to this piece of legislation and of this zoning code, but I had, I was hoping Mr. Marion could answer for me. So with regard to the wind turbines, there's a line in the code that states that, I'll pull it up here. So I'm wondering, how would the city know if an off-grid wind turbine has stopped generating energy and it needs to be decommissioned? I'm sure there's a logical answer, but I really have no idea. Is there a way that the city would be able to tell that it's not generating any energy any longer?
Well, we're going to rely on the user. We're going to pretty much assume that the business is operating the wind turbines also.
Okay. So there's no sort of like mechanism that the city monitors those by?
No.
No? Okay. My other one, this is, seems to be something that was, that is perhaps overlooked, I could be wrong, but for the drive-through waiting spaces, I think drive-throughs probably when, you know, there's some that are grandfathered in, but any ongoing drive-throughs would need to have waiting spaces added in addition to their mandated parking spaces. Do these, is there any signage that's required for these, so that it's, they're identified as parking or waiting spaces?
Well, there are requirements in the code for drive-throughs to have enough stacking requirements. If they are separated from the necessary parking for indoor, they're calculated on a point list. So for the drive-through lane, you have to have at least four cars stacked. That's going to be in a lane that's designated only for those vehicles. The rest of the parking vehicle will be for indoor use.
Right, but I think it's, I mean, there's something that says in...
There are, we do permit directional signs for drive-throughs.
Okay. There's just not anything that says these spaces reserved for waiting? I don't, just curious, it's not...
Again, we don't require waiting spaces. What we do require is spaces for stacking.
Okay.
We look at the code, and what we're calculating the necessary parking, we look at how many cars can be stacked, and as long as there's a minimum of four, it needs to be wired. It doesn't necessarily have to be cars waiting for orders that were either online or not yet prepared as they were.
Because I think that was just the one, one addition to that section, right? It kind of pertained to drive-through, not in, not dining room vehicles, so I was just curious, it's really, I'm sure there's a logic behind it, but...
The biggest change to that, to that section of the code is requiring a bypass.
Right, the bypass line, the 10 feet, yeah.
Right now, there is no bypass line required. This is requiring, and if they can't meet that, then they also, of course, they always have to request interference from them.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you. I have a question as well, on a different thing, but it is sign-related. Just curious, because I've got, having been on BZA before, signs are always a thorn in the side of the BZA, and so seeing some of this is, if it works out the way it's intended, I think is going to be great. I just had a question, when we're talking about removing signs at discontinuance of business, I'm curious, is that the city paying for that sign to be based... I'm curious, is that the city paying for that sign to be basically removed and put a blank sign in the space? Or are we relying on the business when they leave? Or how does, how does that work? And then also with non-conforming signs, I know enforcement was always an issue in the past. So I would be curious, and if there's not an explanation tonight, that's fine. But I would be curious to know what the, the city's intention is with that. Because that, that's a major, been a major issue.
Yeah, there's going to be two, if at all, there's going to be two situations in which a sign needs to be replaced. If it's a conforming sign and it's a wall sign or a permanent freestanding sign, the blank space is required to be installed and replacing it even if the business is no longer there. That will be the property owners or the business's expense, not the city's. Nonconforming is a second, except in this case, if the sign's nonconforming, whether it's too tall, extends above the roofline, they've received the variance in the past for size, it's questionable. And that'll be monitored through our property amendments zoning inspection process.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Now I'll end the hearing. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We have another public hearing this evening for Silver Road Tax Increment Financing Initiative District, and that will be held by Mr. Abernathy. So Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours. And Mr. Huzey will be recusing himself as part of this conversation. Thank you.
All right, so this public hearing is about the, obviously as stated, the tax increment financing incentive. So this is for the housing development that's going to be going on down in the Silver Road area. It's going to be estimated at 108 new single-family homes. So the, the TIF is, it's known as, the, the funds are going to be going towards some new public infrastructure, resulting in reconstruction of Silver Road, creation of new multi-use path, and a sanitary sewer extension. So to my understanding, the TIF would last, I believe, 10 years, and we would not begin the TIF until about a third of the development has been completed. So this is a benefit to the city. It is a, basically a tax benefit. Not too complicated business here, so open it up for questions and comment. Yeah, pretty simple, so.
I have a question.
All right, cool.
Just to belabor things, you know. No, I'm curious, so there, I know that some dirt's already been moved over on the land in question, and I'm sure plans are in place for, you know, the, the builder to, to kind of get the ball rolling over there. How, I mean, and, and as you said, Mr. Abernathy, this is really beneficial to the city. What would happen if for some reason we were to not approve the TIF structure? I mean, that, how would that negatively or positively impact the city or the development? I understand we need, we need housing. I'm not, I'm playing devil's advocate here, I'm just curious.
Sure. Anybody from our city administration want to go ahead and swing at that?
I think first I'd add, Arvin, we have drawn a line on this. When I say we, as a community, we have in the past, is that we don't use the TIF funds to pay for the development. So the builders and their cost, their infrastructure within development, that's on their dime, whether or not this TIF is passed. What the funds that the TIF are going to be used for are the infrastructure improvements that are going to belong to that. That's improvements to Silver Road and Catchmore Road, the types of things that raise the city's responsibility. We'll use the TIF to help fund those. So see, I was like the blade person, the professional gentleman.
No, I, I think you hit it on, on the head there. So it, it is a tax benefit for the community, not for the developer. The developer does not have any reduced payments as a result of this. Technically, there is an exemption that gets replaced by a assessable payment in lieu of tax. So if you're a homeowner who is within a TIF, if you're developing real estate within a TIF, your tax bill is going to go up just the same as everybody else's, and you're going to pay the same rate as everybody else. What's happening, though, is we are, the, the community is redirecting those new revenues for a period of time in order to facilitate this new infrastructure. Again, our policy has been off-site infrastructure that are generally going to be elements that the city is required and responsible for in any event. And in the case of Silver Road, we do have that second-largest industrial employment center right there. And so we have a lot of traffic that is industrial, that uses that as a second egress and ingress into that area. We have about 400 employees coming and going there every single day. The development will add approximately 16 new drivers at the peak hour. So that said, since the development is adding some pressure on that, when we are looking to utilize the TIF, we are making the developer sign a financial guarantee that indeed, there will be these payment in lieu of taxes. And if for some reason there's not, the developer has an additional expense, in addition to any roads that they might build internally or utilities they might build internally, even if they're building public utilities and public roads, those are the developer's expense. It wouldn't be fair to ask the taxpayer to take the risk of building that out. That, that's solely the developers. But in the case of, say, Silver Road, that's, TIF allows us the ability to, again, redirect those revenues for a period of time. And in doing so, in moving forward with that and alleviating any obstacle to the developer's costs of being able to, to access Silver Road, we require that personally guaranteed, financial guarantee, which we see signed coming up in legislation 2023, I'm sorry, 2024-31. Years are going by quick these times. So now you, you mentioned that there's some work underway, and because this is a community benefit, not a tax, a, a benefit for the developer, TIF requires that the year that council would deem to create it, the value of the improvement is set to January 1st, 2024. If for some reason we were not to pass this on December 16th, which, which would be 30 days plus from the date of this public hearing, then the auditor would take the value of the property as of January 1st, 2025. And then anything that's incrementally increased from there is what that future tax revenue would be redirected to pay for the road reconstruction. And then the other thing, too, being that we have Clear Creek Park to the south, and this would be a neighborhood that would welcome 108 new residences. There's no walkability, so that extension of trail would add connectivity there, but also provide some additional walkability for park users as well, since that would all be public. So those are the mechanics. And if anybody wants to substitute for melatonin or Ambien, we do have a detailed, and I'd invite the public to take a look at it, it's pretty interesting. But on our website, if you go to worsteroh.com/development, you'll see a copy of this economic plan study. And it actually breaks down how these revenues can be created and then redirected temporarily to support this new infrastructure. And the idea is that we're able to enable new development at, at a time when we're trying to help, you know, welcome additional workforce. And, and this provides a net revenue increase for our partner school district, our partner county, and then, of course, our own general fund. And so there's a 25% gain in new revenues over the first 10 years, plus this new infrastructure, without having to assess anybody else or to, you know, pull from the general fund and take away from other projects that benefit the public. And then that gets repaid, and of course, the city takes a risk in the meantime. And some of these costs can also cover any interest payments we have, if we finance that. But we get past that 10-year period, we have the infrastructure in place, and now everybody's receiving 100% of these new revenues. And I, I do want to stress, this is new on top of what exists today that's market-driven. So I'm sorry, that was, I, I hope that helped answer that question.
It does, I appreciate it.
Well, Jonathan, thank you for doing that, because that is going to take care of at least one piece of my legislation tonight that I will not have to explain. Any other questions or comments for our public hearing this evening?
Just one more.
Awesome.
Does the big tree stay or go? That's a question for you.
The big tree will stay.
Really?
Yeah, we were going to remove it, but we did some grading profiles and it's going to stay. And we heard quite a bit about the trees staying on social media, so it's staying.
Wonderful. You got your tree.
Thank you, Justin.
Now, we can all, I rimmed around there.
And not have to do it in the dark of night.
All right, public meeting adjourned.
Okay, thank you. Move on to unfinished business. Mr. Huzey has joined us again. First item this evening, second reading of ordinance 2024-27, which we introduced by Ms. Knappich, but Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-27, an ordinance amending Chapter 1353 Fair Housing Practices.
Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. We discussed this in length at our last meeting. Basically talked about the fact that it kind of gets rid of Worcester's fair housing legislation and has a fallback to the federal regulations, essentially. As you can see, basically what we're doing is we are adopting by reference, Section 2.19 of the Charter of the City of Worcester, Ohio adopts by reference and incorporates the Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 4112 Civil Rights Commission in its entirety. So essentially, what we're doing is we're substituting the state's fair housing policy for Worcester's city's fair housing policy, which keeps us consistent with the state. It does not mean that we will not be helping people with their housing problems and issues, as was explained by Jonathan at our last meeting. And unless any, I don't see any reason why not to suspend the rules, so I'm going to move to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules, thank you, Ms. Knappich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Huzey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
All right, this is, motion to suspend the rules has been approved. Ms. Knappich?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Malta. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Huzey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item will also be Ms. Knappich. It's also on second reading. And Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-28, an ordinance to approve and adopt the recommendations of the Planning Commission and amend the codified ordinances in accordance with those recommendations.
All right, Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is the piece of legislation that we had the public hearing on today. We did discuss some changes that I suggested. So I would like to keep this on second reading and bring it back with the amendments at the next meeting to pass it.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Well, it's had its second reading, thank you. We'll move on to our next item, ordinance 2024-29, which also is in its second reading. And Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-29, an ordinance, ordinance to approve and adopt the recommendations of the Planning Commission and amend the codified ordinances in accordance with those recommendations.
Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is another zoning ordinance where we made some changes. Get through the first ordinance, so the code changes is pretty huge. Yeah, here we go. Where we're looking to make some zoning changes. Again, this is because we've got so many materials, so much material here. I'm going to keep it on second reading and then move to pass next meeting.
Okay, all right, very good. So it's, ordinance 2024-29 has had its second reading. With that, we will move on to new business.
Goodbye.
Ordinance 2024-30 is a three-reading piece of legislation. And with that, Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us. Oh, and my apologies, but Mr. Huzey is going to recuse himself again.
Ordinance number 2024-30, creating the Silver Road Tax Increment Financing Incentive District, declaring improvements to the parcels within the incentive district to be of public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive district, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
After a wonderful explanation by Mr. Malley, I don't think there's anything I can add from our public hearing. However, I do believe, based on the timing of the public hearing, I am going to go ahead and move this to a second reading.
All right. So at this point, we've had a first, and we'll talk about it again in two weeks?
Yep.
All right, very good. Well, we've had our first reading on that. And we will then move on to our next piece of legislation. Ordinance 2024-31, it is also a three-reading piece of legislation. But before we give it back to Mr. Abernathy, Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-31, approving the execution and delivery of a development agreement with the Worcester Development Company to LTD.
All right, Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Okay, so this one is to authorize the mayor to negotiate on behalf of the city and essentially make the agreements to execute a lot of the, the reconstruction install, so a lot of the things we talked about of getting the money for is actually he would ought be able to negotiate on our behalf to execute it. So it's the execution piece. So unless there's, I'm going to open it up for questions, but I'm, I'm also going to leave this and put it on to a second reading. So anybody want to go ahead and ask questions before I do that?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
The multi-use path that is slated for this development, I understand that it goes to Clear Creek Park. I'm curious, is there going to be a connection in the future to Oak Hill Park as well? I know that's kind of county road there in Mechanicsburg. Is that something that you're, you're hopeful for? Or are we going to have two different?
Yeah, on our preliminary overall, Steve, I'd like to have a plan. We would like to have a, like, route to begin with, and then I'll be looking for funding sources. Whether it's a big project, so secondary on our path, or a little lane. But yeah, definitely.
The other part of that piece is that we'd also like to hook that in with downtown. So you asked about going north from there. We'd also like to, to connect south, to swing around into the downtown area. So that's, that's the hope. It, you know, probably won't happen while, you know, we're, any of us are sitting on this body, but that's what we're working towards.
I'll just add to it really quick. The way that the TIF legislation itself is drafted, it does give us the flexibility if we identify an additional need for that development and say we can leverage it with grant funds, it'll.
say we can leverage it with grant funds, it allows us the ability to serve that, especially with walkability, whether we're going south, north. Now, we're not counting on that funding. And previously, you'd asked about site preparation right now. So what this agreement specifically does is if it's authorized, the developer is then permitted to not have tap-in fees for extension for sanitary sewer or for assessment for that roadway work. So it alleviates them from that. But in return for that, they're signing that personal guarantee. So if they were not to have this, that expense gets passed on into their costs. So that could have an impact on how quickly things were able to develop. So in our case, we would like to see that development sooner rather than later, but we do have a timer in there that the 10 years that that revenue is going to return to the city doesn't start until we're 30% underway. So we're not burning that first year with, you know, one spec home on the site. But with the past history of this particular development team partners, you know, we felt very confident that we'll be able to hit, you know, the metrics that we would need from a city to reach those goals. And so this agreement binds them to that.
All right, I'll go ahead and let this sit, and we'll move it to second reading.
All right, very good. Mr. Husey will join us again. And next item will be by Ms. Knappich, ordinance 2024-32. Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-32, an ordinance authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into an agreement with representatives of the Worcester Employees Association regarding wages, benefits, and terms and conditions of employment and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. As you all know, periodically, we enter into negotiations with the various unions that the city employees belong to, both our professional employees, as well as our police officers, our firefighters. And this is what this piece of legislation is concerning. There have been negotiations with the Worcester Employees Association. They have accepted an agreement. What this comes to is that the wage and benefits were adjusted to be more competitive with comparable cities and current served contracts. As we all know, it's hard to get good people. And although we live in a perfect community, it still is hard to get good people. So these have been approved by the union, and it's now just a matter of the city agreeing to what's already been negotiated. And because of that, and because I don't want us to go back to square one, I'm going to move to suspend the rules on this.
I'll second it.
So motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Knappich, seconded by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please call the role on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Okay, rules have been suspended. Ms. Knappich?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the role.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item will also be by Ms. Knappich. It's also a three-reading item. But at this point, before we give it to Ms. Knappich, Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-33, an ordinance authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into an agreement with representatives of the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association regarding wages, benefits, and terms and conditions of employment and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is similar to the last piece of legislation I discussed with respect to the police officers and the police union. And in this, again, we've had the opportunity to negotiate with the Policeman's Benevolent Association, and we have looked at the various wages and benefits. We have a hard time keeping and attracting police officers here because of the competitive wages. And so it's nice for us to be able to make our wages a little bit more attractive to bring more police officers in here. The adjustment to salaries, I believe, came to, and this is total, it's $172,160. And really, the estimated total funds and costs are between $200,000 and $250,000. But I think this will make sure that our police force stays strong, and we can make sure that we have enough police officers in our community. And based upon that, I am going to move to suspend the rules.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Knappich, seconded by Mr. Husey. Ms. Hamilton, if you please call the role on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Okay, rules have been suspended. Ms. Knappich, have a motion for us?
Yes, I'm sorry, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Before we call the role on that, is there any additional discussion the council wishes to have on this, or?
Ms. Knappich, I wish it could be more. I realize this is a negotiation between the administration and our law enforcement officers, but I would be more than willing to approve. You know, we need to get parity with other communities and make sure that we're taking care of the folks that are serving us here in the city.
Yep.
But if they've already agreed to this contract, then I agree with it as well. We'll go forward.
I agree.
I was happy to see the addition of the wellness days as well. I think that's something that employers are sort of picking up. It's, I think, in my company, they call them mental health days. But it's used as a sick day, but it doesn't require, you know, a doctor's notice like some locations do. So I was happy to see that in there, especially in that particular line of work. I think, you know, they're facing some really serious stressful situations. So it's nice to see that for them.
Mr. Husey?
This is more for the city. Is the fire union on the same rotation then? Should we expect them pretty soon as well?
Okay, well, no other conversation? Ms. Hamilton, please call the role on the approval.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance is approved. Next ordinance, 2024-34, will also be by Ms. Knappich. And Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-34, an ordinance amending Chapter 162, Management Benefits and Allowing for Immediate Enactment.
Ms. Knappich, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is another contract change, and this is for the management benefits. And this ordinance is going to change to conform individual benefits to those offered to all other city employees as defined in their respective collective bargaining agreements. So the management is picking up on some of the good things that the union's got out of the collective bargaining agreement and going with that. And in particularly, what makes sense is, as Ms. Warren said, there's an additional three days of...there are additional three days of wellness days. And I think it is very positive to have those where people can just say, I just need a day off. Yeah, I'm totally stressed. And so it adds that. And that does attract benefits, attract people and help retain people. So I think that's a very positive change. The other changes, there was a sick leave incentive eligibility was decreased, but it was limited to those with more accumulated sick leave. There's no change to holiday vacation or personal days. And the three wellness days that were added, they don't affect any operating costs because they would be taken from existing sick leave balance. And adjustment to salaries is approximately $229,694, with the estimated total funds and costs in this request being between $246,000 and $300,000. And as with the last two pieces of legislation, this has already been budgeted. So we've already put it in the budget. It's not like we're going to have to find the money anywhere else for these increases because we anticipated those. So based upon that, I am going to move to suspend the rules.
A motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Knappich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Ms. Hamilton, please call the role on the suspension of the rules.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Knappich?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Ms. Hamilton, is there any discussion, any questions with council related to this?
Ms. Knappich, who all does this include? I mean, it does...it's just the people that are not in the union but are in management, like our administration?
It's my understanding that it's exempt employees that...
So managers, supervisors, administrative assistants, and other confidential, there's like some accountants, people in HR, those kinds of things.
How many people total?
I haven't counted.
Approximately, I don't need an exact number.
Quite a few, right? I mean, it's...
It's worth...
Yeah, roughly. I was going to say 20, 30.
Yeah, that's...okay.
That's close enough.
Yeah, I didn't need an exact number. Thank you.
Any other conversation, questions? If not, Ms. Hamilton, please call the...please call the role.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2024-34 is adopted. Last new item this evening, Resolution 2024-88. It is a budgeted item. And before Mr. Husey introduces it, we'll have Ms. Hamilton read it.
Resolution number 2024-88, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to purchase brine creation and distribution equipment and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Husey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a pretty cut-and-dry resolution. This will allow the city to purchase a brine maker with the necessary components for the entire system, a tank applicator and a tank sprayer for Mr. Denning's crew. Winter is coming, apparently. So we will...this will be a new piece of equipment for us as well to just apply some brine throughout strategic parts, you know, through the city's roadways. And we did receive a grant through the Ohio EPA to cover half the cost. But we need to pass this to move forward with this. Mr. Denning's here, if there's any other questions of him.
Just one question. Will you provide rust control after you spray this crap on our roads?
It's actually no different than the road salt itself. So what we do is we try to eliminate that. So we'll reduce the amount of road salt that we'll put on by actually adding the brine. So contrary to what most people believe, the brine's going to...not this brine. We will use what we use for rock salt that we purchase in our vehicle.
So does this get mixed in, or is this sprayed down like state highways are?
Both, both.
Okay.
So we'll have an applicator that will be part of this, a 1,200 gallon applicator. Then we can do bridge decks and hills only. We won't be doing vein throw pairs like those, like doing state highways and things like that. We do use it. We've been using it for about six or seven years on our main roads. And it's sprayed directly to the salt as it's coming off the back of the spinner. And it reduces our cost of salt usage by about 20%. So we'll continue to do that. We just won't have to purchase it. We'll make our own house, and we'll save quite a bit on that, at least half the cost.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And expected delivery is in time for winter, maybe?
It's probably a 60-day delivery.
That's supposed to be a warm and wet winter, so hopefully we won't need it as much.
We have about 5,000 in storage right now from the last couple of years of only using about 1,800 a ton last year. Normal average year is about 3,500 a ton, so.
Okay.
Nothing else, Mr. President?
All right, so...
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Husey, is there a second?
Second.
Whoops. Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the motion to adopt.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Okay. Well, very good. Moving on to miscellaneous, we have a few people that have signed up.
Mr. President, I would go ahead and motion to give their time from two to four minutes. Second.
All right, well, I'm not even...I guess we'll...
Acclamation.
Yeah. So all those in favor of moving the time from two to four minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, we'll go to four minutes. All right, our first person this evening has signed up is James Zeider on 1898 Burbank Road. Hopefully I didn't butcher your name too bad.
Actually, you did well for a change, which is unusual. I'm up here because the roundabout on Burbank Road, I drive a tractor trailer, and we have a lot of truck traffic, and I'm concerned about the traffic impact of this. I think that I'm looking at an alternative. Instead of going, making the roundabout there, extend Winkler straight through the parking lot and make it into a...what, curve it onto Oldman Road, and then eliminate the light at Burbank and Oldman and put yield signs at Oldman and Winkler Extension. Just a thought. I, you know, because anytime you get a roundabout and you got track, you've got Sydney Services coming down through there, it's going to be a mess, I think. And I think the whole thing with the buses, I think you ought to talk to some of the bus drivers and do an in-depth study of feasibility of doing a roundabout there. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next person that signed up is Tom Graff, 181 Buchholz Drive.
181. For the last three weeks, we've been dealing with MCTV and the City Engineering Department. After Omni Fiber installed fiber optic lines in the backyard, MCTV is now going to install fiber optic in the tree lawn, otherwise known as the right-of-way on Buchholz and Greensview. MCTV says they obtained permission from the city because the backyard was, their quote, "too congested." The backyard easement is currently 12 feet, and I'm unsure who thought this might be a good idea. Mr. Myers has some pictures I'd like you to take an opportunity to look at. The primary problem is the green pedestals that you'll see in the tree lawns, which look like they are from an RV park. They're very big eyesores in the block. They're leaning, and they're already scattered throughout the street, as you could see by the pictures. When asked, it's been... When asked, the construction worker who was installing them, he confirmed that this is the finished product, and he said he was glad they are not in his yard, which I think speaks volumes. The last picture that you see on there illustrates what the current pedestal that I had in my backyard previously looks like, and you can see by the state of disrepair, it's been that way over 15 years, that there's little to no maintenance involved in these. I can only imagine what they're going to look like after we see some snowplows go through and after the kids vandalize them, which they invariably do. The construction crew was also digging outside of the right-of-way, which is, again, the tree lawn. They're digging in our front yards of both myself and all of my neighbors without the required permission. They are supposed to come up and ask ahead of time. I was raking leaves in my yard, he completely ignored me, brought a little track hoe up and just started digging away. When I asked the individual why he was doing that, he said there's a pipe in the way. There is no such pipe. I called MCTV and they said that what they wanted to do is put drop lines in, so that's what they're doing. The city says that MCTV, and this was coming from John Rice, should be more customer-oriented, and that they would probably work with the residents because we're the paying customers. Well, I spoke to Brian Stark from MCTV, and believe me, they're anything but interested in what the neighbors think. Basically, there are options available as alternatives, but they're simply not interested in them because they're going to cost a little more money. And if they would have just taken some time from the start, I'm sure they could have done this in a much more sensible and practical way, and we wouldn't be stuck with these eyesores, which are going to be nothing but problems for years to come. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Graff, are you also going to speak?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you.
Just to add on to what my husband was just, my main, one of my main questions was, I wonder why, it seems like the city, someone in the city didn't do their homework on this situation. I mean, we were told, MCTV says, "Okay, from the city," but the city, we talked to two different engineers, one said he really didn't even want to approve it, and that he didn't expect it to be above ground, like it is with the big pedestal. And then the other one said, "Yes, yes, we did know that. It was in the plan." So to me, that's a lack of communication. But I'm fairly certain that nobody in this room has found these boxes sitting in their front lawn, because it's very unsightly, and I'm a little surprised at the city that they would approve something like this. The easement in our backyard, it could have and it should have been used, the fiber-installed fiber optic without creating an eyesore. MCTV chose the easier way to save themselves money. I, along with my neighbors, work hard to keep our yards looking nice. As a courtesy, I would have thought that we would have saved, or would have been consulted by somebody before they put these in without asking. And I was also curious, are they going to continue to put these boxes all throughout the city? Because that is going to cause an extreme eyesore if you put these in tree lawns everywhere. And I thought we have our pride in that, in what things look like around here. So that's my question.
That is a really good question. I'd like to find out more about that, whether we can look forward to having these all over the city and why they couldn't use the back easements.
So I've already asked some questions to our engineering division as far as allowing them within the right-of-way. We don't really have the ability to say no, we can just basically dictate where and sufficient distance away from our utilities.
Sure.
As far as easements in people's yards, we have no authority to tell people who go in the yard, so the utility asks us can be located in the right-of-way, we have to work with them there, maybe suggest, and we can't force anybody to go in somebody else's backyard. As far as the pedestals, I don't know, that's all I'm gonna ask.
Yeah.
Investigate the pedestal versus the ground.
Because some of the other applications I've seen are flush to the ground. It was bright net and some of the other ones. Again, I was looking at properties where neighbors have complained, but they weren't complaining about the pedestal, they're complaining about the condition of the digging and leaving it not repaired. But those, none of those, I was over on Douglas and Hamilton, and I've been about five or six of these calls, and I know John Rice, I've been, I keep sending him these, I feel bad for him. He does hope to be out of the fiber cable business as soon as possible. I know he's not thrilled with the whole situation either. We've been getting a lot of complaints, but, so yeah, I would like you to look into that. It does seem that those would be kind of, I mean, our planning and zoning people, if I asked to put these posts in the right-of-way, I think would say, "No, that's probably..." We get picky about signs and fences, for God's sake. I don't think this is, this is even worse than that. I mean, somebody can't put a fence up that doesn't match their other fence, but you can put this in the front yard?
Now, this is not very attractive at all, and I, and I would, I would be upset if this was in my, my front yard. I would rather have something flush through the ground, and I think we should probably work with MCTV.
Perhaps make, make a motion that MCTV is no longer able to provide services in the city. We'll throw them out. We can pass anything, it's just whether John can make it stick.
Well, then there's that enforcement issue.
I don't know, we'll get their attention.
They're not the, they're not the only guilty party in this. I mean, I've heard nightmare situations of other, from other communities about Omni, I mean, what Willoughby was without power for 18 hours last week because somebody hit a line. There's a, my sister's had her mailbox replaced twice, so, because of these companies. So it's just really shoddy workmanship, and they don't care about the community, obviously, so this is what we're dealing with.
I think it's fair to say that we don't like the fiber optic business.
Yeah, agree.
Yeah, I don't, did Marion, is the Marion still there? I don't know, did, did he get a copy of the one here that's blocking the fire hydrant?
Yes.
Okay.
But Vince did?
I didn't know Vince, yes. I mean...
I don't know that he's on that list.
Did that one really have to be moved, or MCTV would have to replace it after they knocked it out of the way?
Oh, I can have, we can have...
I kind of figured that.
I'll be, we can send this to Mr. Salee, we can have this removed pretty quickly.
Cable box, fire.
MCTV will have a comment on this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we have our last person that's signed up this evening is Mr. Barnett.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go down a little bit deeper, but, this project's roundabout is the governor of Dewine. That's his little pet peeve right here, and I have no problem with it. I think it's a good idea. I'm gonna quote, I, in fact, I emailed his office last week, and what I got back was, "Ohio, a home rural state, which they can't interfere with the city." But anyhow, it says, "These projects," this is the governor quoting this, "These projects will make improvements that will help reduce the number of crashes, making it safer for these who travel in these areas each day." I lived there three and a half years. There's been four or five accidents. Not one person has been transported to the hospital. Not one vehicle has been towed. And it's no secret, I got a sign in my front yard, "No roundabouts here." You wouldn't believe, Bob, Mr. Reynolds, Mayor, the people are coming to my door in our disbelief of this. I'm not mad at anybody, I'm just trying to make a point. You and I have been friends for years, but I'm telling you, these people do not want it. I don't think the funding is justified for this roundabout. And I will find out, because I emailed the governor last Friday again. So I want to thank everybody and go out and vote tomorrow.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, with that, that's our last person that's signed up to speak with us this evening. With that, our last item is a motion to adjourn. But I guess before we do that, what's that?
Should we do miscellaneous?
Well, we just did miscellaneous, but I forgot, I didn't give you guys a chance to speak, and I'm sure you all have a whole lot to talk about, so. Well, so did Mr. Gaffey.
Oh, good, all right. No, I just, I just want to say, you know, I appreciate the police department's efforts to, and anybody else that was involved in, you know, helping to address the situation out there at Knightsfield. Really appreciate the communication and the timely fashion that some of those things were handled. And I know some of the residents appreciate that as well, so, yeah, I just wanted to extend a thank you for that.
Ms. Warden?
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate the Worcester Fire Department for a really fabulous new facility next door. I'm sure if you get a chance to drive by in the next couple of days or swing by and check it out, they'd be happy to show it off to you, as long as, we, there were a couple of calls while we were there tonight for the ribbon cutting, so it is a busy place. Keep that in mind. And I'd just like to encourage everybody to, if you haven't already, I hear there's been a lot of early voter turnout, which is fabulous, but if you haven't done so already, please go and vote tomorrow. Thank you.
Mr. Malta?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. It's very important to me, and I do appreciate it greatly. I do have my own personal problems in our neighborhood, and I have some residents here with us, with Omni Fiber. So I get it, I'm on board with you, it's, it's not been a good thing for us. So our street was shut down for 16 hours because they hit a gas line. Shut down, closed both ends.
Wow.
Enough of that, but thank you all again for coming.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you. Certainly hats off to, we've been cutting for the fire station, I know that was a long project, and my thanks to the firefighters who basically camped out over on Mechanics Row while we were able to do this project. They were all good sports about it, I know it wasn't the easiest thing for them to do. We do appreciate that, and hopefully we've paid them back a little bit with what we've been able to do next door. Several months ago, I reached out to our police department and our fire department on behalf of a scout pack, scout troop pack. They wanted to take a tour of the safety services building, and Chief Salee and Chief Fisher, Mr. Rotolo, were all very accommodating, be happy to do it. Well, it was scheduled for tonight, and that was obviously before we knew this was when we were going to have the ribbon cutting. So certainly want to thank, I don't know who Chief Salee assigned to be up at the other building while this was all happening down here, because they didn't get the cupcakes and cookies up there. I do know that Patrolman Hall represented our, our police department, my thanks to him for being up there and for hosting our scouts up there at that, while this event was happening simultaneously. So thank you guys for accommodating that issue. I also want to point out that although it was only a couple of weeks ago, on October 21st, that I was made aware about some of the issues over by Knightsfield, I just want to point out that there's been 72 safety checks by our city police, starting back into as early as September, so they were already aware of it. I just wanted to point out that I think I've got great confidence that they'll do everything they can to help rectify that situation, and I would like the citizens to continue to monitor and help them do that, and they'll let, make us aware of it if there's needs that go forward after this. And the only last comment I have, I'm not in particular favor of the roundabout, I believe. I'd like to see the administration, although I did get a lot of brochures in support of why roundabouts are good, I want to point, I'm in favor of roundabouts in general, I just think that's not the right location, and I do hope the city will look at other opportunities to, to address that situation. Up to and including doing nothing, since that's been there for 30 years, and we haven't had to do anything up until now, so that's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you. Ms. Knappich?
Yes, actually, I'd like to say that while the boy scouts were up there, the girl scouts were at, were at the, they were getting the cupcakes and the cookies. Sorry, boys, they missed out. But it was a really, really nice open house. The facility next door, if you do get a chance to ask for a tour, please do, it's beautiful, and we, we've toured it before, the changes, it's a thousand percent better. The kitchen, they can actually cook in, the dining room, they can actually sit down, the whole shift could sit down and eat. There's plenty of places for people to relax. They, I have to be honest, their last, their former bunk rooms, I wouldn't have stayed in them, they were creepy, they were like a coffin. But these are very, very nice. And, and our, you know, our folks, our firefighters deserve it, because they put their lives on the line, and we really appreciate what they do. So thank you to them and for the really nice open house. I would like to urge people, November 4th is the Boys and Girls Club Make a Difference event, and Boys and Girls Club does a lot of really, really amazing things in the community for kids, so if you can get out there and, and go to that event, please, you know, get tickets and contact the office and let them know that, you know, you're interested, because it is a really good, good event for the youth of our community. Speaking of the youth, thank you to the police department for doing such a good job of jumping on that issue down at Knightsfield right away. We really, really appreciate that. And finally, please, it doesn't matter how you vote, just vote tomorrow. It's important, it's a right, it's a privilege, and it's, it's important. Thank you.
One thing, Ms. Knappich, the Boys and Girls Club is the 14th, I believe, right?
I think that's what it said, November 14th.
Okay, we heard the 4th.
14th, sorry.
Sorry, just to be clear. The 14th, everybody.
It's not tonight.
Go out and support it. It's a great event.
It's 10 days from now, but it's not tonight. Otherwise, I'd be there. No, I'd be here, and wish you no's there.
Yeah.
I beg for the, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abernathy?
Yeah, I'd like to take a moment and thank Assistant Chief Rotolo. He took some time after our last council meeting to talk a little bit about the Knightsfield stuff with me, and just kind of go through just some of the challenges and items that his officers have, you know, some of the challenges they go through and some of the actions that they've been able to take, and just really trying to address some of those issues that have been going on there. And, you know, it's, sometimes we, we kind of see the things that are on the surface, and we don't always know the stuff that goes on behind the scenes and the, and the efforts that they're making. And I think sometimes it's, it's good that, you know, some, some of us from council steps up and acknowledges that, you know, there, there are things that go on behind the scenes, and they're working really, really hard to try and protect us, and, and they go the extra mile, and, and there's a lot more that goes on, so I want to acknowledge that, that there's a lot of effort going on to make sure that, that those neighborhoods are being protected. So I, I want to definitely thank Scott back there for, you know, definitely bringing me up to speed and sharing some of the things that are going on, because, you know, there's, these are some tougher times, and they're, they're working their butts off, so thanks to our Worcester PD for all that they're doing, and definitely taking care of some of those situations and making the city of Worcester much safer. And that's all I have for this evening.
All right, thank you. Ms. Huzey?
I'll be brief. Yeah, congratulations to the fire department on the new station next door. Sorry I was able to, I missed that. Thank you to the city and the police department for the quick response to the Knightsfield area. I'm sure the neighbors really appreciate it, and I know you guys have your thumb on the pulse over there. And thank you to all the election volunteers who will be working the polls tomorrow. It's probably a thankless job, but we need them, and everybody, please vote, and let's have a peaceful election tomorrow. And with that, motion to adjourn, Mr. President.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.